All right, School Board members, take your seats, please. All right. The May 12th, 2022 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Westfield Chorus under the direction of Ms. Catherine Pierce.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the waxed-lingered glare, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Bulldogs. That was beautiful. Agenda item 2.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on May 12th, 2022, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during this closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Ms. Omech. All those in favor? That is unanimous with Ms. Marin and Dr. Anderson away from the table. Agenda item 2.03, Announcements. Dr. Anderson and Ms. Marin will be absent this evening. Item 4.02, Policy 4750, has been postponed and will be rescheduled at the May 26th meeting. Item 4.03, Regulation 2601, Student Rights and Responsibilities, has been rescheduled to the May 26th regular meeting. Item 6.04, Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee Annual Report, has been postponed and will be scheduled at a future meeting. If you'd like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/boarddocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. I call on Mr. Chattery for an announcement.
School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the health and well-being of students and is an integral part of a quality school health program. School nurses promote health, safety, prevention, and wellness, intervene with actual and potential health problems, and provide case management services. They're an invaluable bridge in connecting healthcare providers, public health, and families. The school system works collaboratively with the Fairfax County Health Department to provide quality school public health nursing services to the children of Fairfax County Public Schools and recognizes May 11th as the School Nurse Day in Fairfax County.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.05, Bus Drivers, Van Drivers, and Attendance Recognition. The Board will invite each recognition recipient and their supporters to come up to the dais for a photo with the Board after the reading of all recognitions. I call on Ms. Omech.
The major responsibility for school transportation safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our dedicated school bus drivers, van drivers, and attendants. They daily transport more than 144,000 students in a fleet of 1,625 school buses and 93 vans on more than 6,800 separate routes, traveling over 16 million operational miles each year. FCPS greatly appreciates the vital role that our drivers and attendants play in our students' safety.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.04, Internal Audit Awareness Month Recognition. I'll call on Ms. Erenak Kofax for this recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To raise awareness and recognize the Office of Auditor Generals May has been designated as the Internal Audit Awareness Month by the Institute of Internal Auditors. The FCPS Office of Auditor General, or OAG, serves and operates at the direction of the School Board. The School Board Audit Committee serves to promote the independence and objectivity of OAG by ensuring Board audit coverage, broad coverage, adequate consideration of audit reports, and appropriate action on recommendations. OAG has an important purpose within Fairfax Public Schools as our internal auditors, and it provides a variety of roles and responsibilities. These duties can include providing oversight and assessing controls. Through their expertise and knowledge, the broad perspective of FCPS OAG can evaluate efficiency and effectiveness and provide management and the School Board with assurance that the adequate controls are in place to respond to the risks that may threaten the organization. They can evaluate risks. Risks can be everywhere: to our reputation, inefficient operation, fraud, lawsuits, or policy violations. The OAG assesses the significance of the organization's many risks and effectiveness of risk management, and communicates these to management and the School Board, and develops recommendations to improve risk management. They improve operations. With a solid understanding of the organization's objectives, the OAG can examine operations to determine whether they are efficient and effective. They can promote ethics. Professional internal auditors abide by a code of ethics that upholds the privilege of integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. They raise red flags when they discover improper conduct. They monitor compliance by assessing the organization's compliance with applicable laws, regulations, and contracts to ensure that management is addressing these requirements adequately. And they offer insight into the impact that this non-compliance could have on an organization and inform senior management and the School Boards of non-compliance. They investigate fraud, because fraud can affect any level of the organization. And the OAG has provided access to all records, as well as the authority to conduct audits and investigate possible fraudulent behavior. And then finally, they communicate the results. After conducting thorough audits, the OAG reports its findings and recommends appropriate courses of action to strengthen organizational success. I want to thank our own Auditor General, Ms. Esther Ko, and her team here tonight, Chris Migulaccio, Danielle Moore, and Heidi Flanagan. So thank you all for all that you do to keep our system going strong. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.06, Social Worker of the Year Recognition. I will call on Ms. Erenak Kofax again for this recognition.
Thank you so much. Before I begin, I want to thank Ms. Claudia McDowell for coming back this evening. We apologize for delaying your recognition during our regular School Board meeting on April 14th due to other business matters. And we appreciate you and your family being here and coming back tonight. So on behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, I am honored to recognize Ms. Claudia McDowell, who recently was named 2022 National School Social Worker of the Year. Ms. McDowell is a social worker at Lynbrook Elementary School in the Lee District. Mrs. McDowell was named Social Worker of the Year by the School Social Work Association of America for her commitment to the profession and for positively impacting the lives of students, families, and the staff of the community she serves. On April 8th, Mrs. McDowell received her award at the SSWAA National Conference in Chicago. She began working at Lynbrook Elementary School 10 years ago, and she was instrumental in working with the school's attendance program, helping to counter chronic absenteeism by developing support systems to increase all students' sense of belonging, confidence, and engagement in the school. She also started a mindfulness program where kindergarten classes got to know her, to see her, and see who they truly are. Lynbrook Elementary Principal Catherine Sane recently said she is always there to help in a moment of need. She has had many times where on her way home from work or in the early evening where she dropped up supplemental food carts to families that have an immediate need for food or formula. She has gone above and beyond, not only in the school and classrooms, but during difficult times, too. There was a fire in Fairfax County that impacted some families who attended Lynbrook, and Mrs. McDowell coordinated with county officials and the Red Cross to provide clothing and food. She also helped to arrange temporary transportation so students could get to school. She launched a crisis team and worked with teachers so they could help students who were living through this traumatic event. That is what led her colleagues to nominate her for this year's award. Mrs. McDowell, you are truly an inspiration to all of us and I hope and many future school social workers. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, I thank you for your service to our FCPS students and to the Lynbrook community. Thank you.
My apologies. We'd like to invite Mrs. Claudia McDowell, her husband and children, Lynbrook Elementary School Principal Kathleen Sane and staff, to please join us for a photo with the Board. And I'll ask my colleagues to please remain in the front for the next two photos. I'd like to invite Transportation Services Director Francine Furby and the bus drivers and van drivers who are here this evening in support of this recognition to please join the Board at the dais for a photo. And now I'd like to invite our great Auditor General team, led by Esther Ko. Oh, that's all right. Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, a microphone or video will be turned off. School Board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements. Avoid profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's nondiscrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the School Board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. We are grateful for all of you who have come to speak to us today, and we thank you for your cooperation. Our first speaker is Devon Hagan.
Testing. All right. Good evening, Fairfax County School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Braybrand. My name is Devon Hagan, and I am a freshman at Thomas Jefferson High School for Sciences and Technology. I'm also the proud grandson of immigrants from India and a descendant of immigrants from Germany and England. I'm here tonight because, like my sister Sabina, I'm asking for FCPS to formally recognize June as Immigrant Heritage Month. Our country is a nation of immigrants, and the demographics of Fairfax County reflect this. Foreign-born individuals represent over 30% of the county population. Among Fairfax County children, over 43% have a parent who was born outside of the United States. Furthermore, English language learners are almost 20% of the current student population. However, over the last few years, immigrants have been attacked for various reasons, and this xenophobia needs to be rectified. My teachers at TJ are immigrants from Egypt, Cuba, and India. My friends and classmates are also from a multitude of backgrounds, from countries such as Korea, Nigeria, and Russia. Our diversity is our strength, and to paraphrase Hamilton, immigrants get the job done. I was surprised to learn that unlike many other school districts across the country, FCPS does not recognize Immigrant Heritage Month. In my 10 years of FCPS schooling, it was up to the school PTA to arrange a heritage night. It is important that we recognize the contributions and accomplishments It is important that we recognize the contributions and accomplishments of immigrants throughout our history and share our communities' immigration stories. We should celebrate the diverse heritages of our community, of our FCPS community: students, teachers, staff, bus drivers, custodians, parents, volunteers, and our school board members. I look forward to working with you to make this happen as soon as possible. Thank you for your time and efforts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sabina Hagan.
Good evening Fairfax County School Board members and Superintendent Dr. Braybrand. My name is Sabina Hagan and I am a sixth grader at Hickok Elementary School. I am also the proud granddaughter of immigrants from India from my mom's side and immigrants from Germany. From Germany and England from my dad's side. I'm here tonight because like my brother Devon, I'm asking for FCPS to formally recognize June as Immigrant Heritage Month. This school year, I researched and wrote a paper on the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1965 for National History Day. This act abolished the National Origins Coda, which restricted immigrants from countries outside of Northern and Western Europe. This resulted in changing our country's demographics to include more immigrants from Asia, Africa, and Latin America. It is important to know how this act changed our American identity to a more multicultural one. I see this diversity every day at my school. My teacher is an immigrant from China. My friends and classmates and their parents are also from countries such as India, Korea, Egypt, and Brazil. I was surprised to learn that FCPS has not formally recognized Immigrant Heritage Month. We should recognize the special contributions of immigrants within FCPS as students, teachers, staff, and parents. I look forward to working with you to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Campbell. Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Campbell and I'm speaking tonight as Fairfax County SEPTA's current Vice President and incoming president for the 2022-23 school year. Earlier this week, we sent you a letter detailing significant concerns that we had with the Student Rights and Responsibilities Red Line document made public on April 25th. It is our standing, understanding that this is not the most recent version of the Red Line, but it is the most recent version that is available to the public at this time, and so this is the document on which our concerns are based. The new cellphone policy does not take the privacy and complex needs of students with disabilities into account. Instead, it has great potential to violate their privacy, increase their anxiety, and further ostracize them within the school community. Cellphones provide a wealth of accommodations for medical and educational needs, such as apps that monitor glucose levels for students with type 1 diabetes, the ability to allow students with mental health needs to reach out to trusted contacts throughout the day, recording lessons, and more. Additionally, our military families have expressed the need to be able to immediately reach their children during school hours when very limited communication is made available to deployed parents. While we understand and in many ways agree with the concerns our educators have raised regarding the distractions that cellphones are currently, we do not agree that the privacy of students' special education or medical status is an acceptable sacrifice to address that need. How can we work together to find a middle ground between the proposed policy that will violate privacy and the distraction-ridden environment that exists now? Another serious concern we have is on page 55 where it states, "When a disciplinary incident involving a student with an intellectual or developmental disability may result in the suspension of any kind, school staff shall not request verbal or written statement from the student until a parent has been provided notice." We believe it is imperative to change the wording from "until a parent has been provided notice" to "until a parent has provided consent." Students with disabilities should also have a third-party adult present in these meetings to protect their interests and rights. We appreciate your attention to these concerns as well as the further concerns we shared in our letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Cooper Gold.
Good evening. I am Diane Cooper Gold, Advocacy Chair of Fairfax County SEPTA. The SRNR topic is one of great concern for us because according to the 2019 FCPS OSRI report on student behavior, discipline, and disproportionality, students with disabilities in FCPS are three and a half times more likely to receive discipline referrals than their non-disabled peers. And the 2020, the 2022 Care and Culture Report continues to express similar disproportionality. The SRNR itself states, "Positive approaches to student discipline and collaboration among parent, teachers, and school administrators have proven to be the best way to teach expected conduct and responsible citizenship." Why then do the revisions to the SRNR increase the intensity of required punitive discipline measures against students in elementary school who are in grades four through six? What evidence has FPS, FCPS used to determine that treating a fourth and sixth through sixth grade elementary student to harsher punishments equal to that of their middle school peers will improve their behavior or teach lacking skills? Students with disabilities, particularly those with neurological differences, developmental disabilities, and cognitive impairments are at greatest risk when these proposed changes occur because those students may lack the ability to understand the consequences of their behavior, have difficulty with impulse control or sensory and emotional regulation, lack in social and emotional development compared to their peers, they are more prone to fight, flight, or freeze responses, and they are particularly harmed by discipline measures that remove them from their instruction and related services, resulting in a greater widening of gaps between themselves and their neurological peers. Rather than increasing the use of harsher punitive measures, we would like to know if FCPS has considered banning suspensions for elementary-age students. Further, we believe that out-of-school suspensions should not be implemented for any student in elementary school unless there is a serious imminent danger of physical harm to other students or staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne Sears.
A new study by educational experts at Harvard University discovered what most Fairfax County parents knew all along. Remote learning, which was scientifically unnecessary during the pandemic with mitigation strategies according to the Fairfax Health Department, decimated academics in our school system, and students in high-poverty schools suffered learning loss the most. What has this board done besides ignore the pleas of parents? They doubled down on investing in, you guessed it, online plat, an online platform called tutor.com with the cost to taxpayers of nearly a half a million dollars. Your solution after nearly 18 months of regressive virtual learning is more virtual learning that will continue to crush the souls of our children. This is nothing short of educational malpractice. Our school system was given $188 million in federal funding to fix the mistake of shuttering schools and learning loss. This is on top of an annual budget of $3.4 billion. These additional funds were not used to fix the damage inflicted by the board. Instead of an all-hands-on-deck approach, this board wasted precious time, time our children don't have, with an assortment of ridiculous pet projects outside the school system's legal scope, expertise, and jurisdiction, instead of fixing what the school board broke in the first place. Every single person in gatehouse with a teaching license should be in our schools helping teachers with the massive learning loss you created. Or they should be let go and that money should be reinvested in the classroom. Let's be honest, teachers were hung out to dry by the school board and union operatives. Parents and staff are constantly cleaning up your messes. K-12 education is a national security imperative, and instead this board continues to be ill-equipped to understand, lead, and properly invest in education of our precious children. Instead, you continue to focus on everything but academics. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shawna Yasher.
I'm here to talk about learning loss and the tutor.com contract, and I'm asking that you not renew it. FCPS spent nearly $500,000 on tutor.com for a quarter of the school year. What's the full contract costing for next year? One million? Two million? Cancel it. Did you know that for kids in grades K through five, there isn't even an option to select math as a tutor option? The kids work around this problem by lying and saying they're in sixth grade. If the child figures out this workaround, they discover that most of the tutors are only available for the chat function, the child must wait 20 minutes for a virtual, for an actual in-person person to talk to them. Students then have to upload examples of the problems that they're struggling with, which for the majority of elementary kids requires an adult nearby to navigate taking the photo, uploading it, making sure there's no identifiable information on it, or the online tutor must immediately end the session. Also, did you know that high schools like West Springfield have canceled their in-person peer-to-peer tutoring programs because tutor.com is now available? In-person tutoring with peers is incredibly effective and creates those important social bonds. Please ask that those programs be reinstated. I've been working with Dr. Anderson on solutions for in-person tutoring, but parents need your help. Please put out a plea to the community to help address learning loss. We want businesses to partner with schools to provide their employees with time away from work to help tutor kids. Not only will this help with learning loss, but it will provide an opportunity for many students to connect with lawyers, accountants, engineers, and other professionals that perhaps the kids may think of a future career in those fields. Many in the community encourage this board to keep schools closed. That was a mistake and one parents will not forget about. Kids are now a year behind and you've provided no real solution to learning loss. The reality is that a significant number of kids need to repeat grades. It's time to admit that keeping schools closed was a mistake and make the necessary hard decisions. Have kids repeat grades, hire more teachers for one-on-one support, and engage businesses to create scalable in-person tutoring. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Gillette Mallard.
Good evening. I just want to make a quick announcement, which is, I couldn't get my remarks printed up, so I'm gonna have to look at my iPhone and I don't think it's gonna be a very, um... Let's hope I can get through this. Anyway, first of all, good evening Superintendent Braybrand, school board members. Thank you for this opportunity. I totally support the two speakers before me. I know, although I don't currently have kids in school, I just know what has happened during this time of virtual learning. One thing I will say is, oh, it's great to breathe without a mask. My daughter's pregnant for the second time, first time she miscarried, but now her doctor said, "No mask. The baby needs to breathe oxygen." So if a baby in the womb needs to breathe, what do you think about kids in a classroom? I've told you already my background in two science degrees in language development. You can't teach with masks on, so I hope you will not re-implement a mask mandate. Anyway, many of us were read with alarm the revelations that the FBI whistleblower indicated that the FBI did, or maybe still does, collect personal data on persons speaking to the school boards. In spite of Attorney General Garland's denials, if I'm being monitored tonight by any FBI agents, our mortgage payments are up to date, we've paid our taxes, and we paid our extra real estate taxes to support FCPS, okay? Just wanted to get that out of the way. I also want to know, oh, did you all do your homework? Did you all do your homework? I know it's a pretty lengthy book and it is packed with stuff, but Judith Reisman's book, Stolen Honor, Stolen Innocence, is critical if you maintain the current FLE program because it is an effort subtly in many ways to sexual...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Rigby. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Robert Rigby. I'm speaking tonight about supporting parents, guardians, students, and families. We've all seen the super-duper aggression towards true history and Black Indigenous and all people of color with the phantom issue of CRT, plus the gross stuff about LGBTQIA+ people, books, pedophilia, and even made it into Judge Katanji Brown Jackson's confirmation hearing. All families and students in FCPS feel more like we belong when we are clear that we will stand up for less powerful and less privileged people. When we allow meanness towards some votes to go on without a vivid response, everybody wonders, "What if someone bullies me?" When the governor tried to bully the BOS, Board of Supervisors, and people who support reproductive rights by saying the residents of Fairfax are a dangerous mob, Chair McCain and the BOS were clear that Fairfax is doing it right, we are following our normal processes, and told the governor, "Please do not exploit us for political gain." The school needs to do the same thing. A simple way to support students' families is not to delay successful processes we have and delay the Fleecak report out of concern about bullying from Schultz and Yuckin. Don't back off from the right thing and the usual thing in response to potential animosity from Richmond. Follow the normal process, don't appease the bullies, approve the Fleecak port, report in its entirety as it is in June as usual. On top, I support the young people about Ingraham Heritage Month in June along with Pride Month. I think that'd be fabulous. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Willow Walkie.
Hello, Dr. Braybrand and the school board members. I'm Willow Walkie, She, Her, Hers, President of the Transgender Education Association, Board Member of FCPS Pride, and a member of Fleecak. I have three children who have graduated from FCPS schools and one who is a rising senior. I've been an FCPS parent since 1995. I normally come to speak to you on making schools safer for trans, non-binary, and gender-diverse students. Tonight, I will be talking to you about teaching FLE to mixed-gender groups. While this will help trans students, it will also help cisgender and heterosexual students when they get older. Knowledge of your spouse's body and how it functions is important, and that is not just about how good-looking you find them or how nice they hug. This is about understanding menstruation, infertility, how sex happens, how pregnancy happens, protecting against unwanted pregnancies, protecting against infections, what kind of problems can happen during pregnancy, and being able to help your spouse detect breast or testicular cancer. FLE is a health class. It teaches students about their own health and the health of others, others they have in their family, parents, siblings, cousins, friends, and their potential spouses. Mixed FLE occurs in other counties locally and other school systems across the country. The main criticism is that it makes students uncomfortable. We have to ask ourselves, why are students uncomfortable learning about their bodies? People who are afraid of FLE have the option to opt their children out. People who are afraid of FLE will always criticize what is taught. No matter what is taught in FLE or how it is taught, there are people who will object and will claim that the schools are teaching sex to children. Sexual health is not about the act of sex. It is about staying healthy and keeping yourself and those you love healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Hall.
Can you see me? I'm on a new computer.
We can see you.
Great, thank you. As an FCPS parent, I'm worried because every day this week I've read about horrific attacks on books, student privacy, and the very humanity of the LGBTQIA community in Virginia. For nearly a year, Loudoun County dark money parents groups have tried to smear queer students as predators and rapists, but now Virginia's attorney general is joining them to subpoena private student records to identify and possibly out queer students. His focus primarily on Loudoun's transgender policy tells us who he fears. Here in Fairfax County, in this very room, people regularly make gross, false, and dehumanizing statements about LGBTQIA students and their families. Virginia's governor has signed an overly broad bill that could limit all mention of queer subjects and people in our schools, which means my 13-year-old daughter was right when she said, "First, they came to ban the books because they cannot yet ban us." This means that they're going after our pride groups, our privacy, and our dignity with near constant attacks amplified by right-wing news and astroturfed parents groups. All of this is terrifying for students and their families because we know what happens once a family is targeted. They've come after our jobs and have threatened physical harm towards many of us in this very room. So what would they do to children who they regularly target and dehumanize on social media? Based on your own survey, 17% of FCPS students identify as LGBTQIA. That is nearly one-fifth of... That is nearly one-fifth of students, which means possibly one in two FCPS households has a child who identifies as queer. That means all of us need to act now. Please stand up and speak out against attacks on students and their families. Do it in this room, on social media, and if the governor and his homophobic and transphobic administration comes knocking at the schoolhouse door, you need to say, "Hands off our students, teachers, and families," and thank you. Please be brave. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Langton.
The Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook says on page 20, "It is a punishable violation of the behavioral code for students to post, distribute, display, or share inappropriate or obscene material or literature." Then why is it in the school library? If it's against school rules for our children to harass each other with obscene books, why are the adults at school supplying them with the books to do it? If you read these books to your coworkers at Gatehouse Road, you would be written up for sexual harassment and for creating a hostile work environment. Ms. Sizemore, if you said to Ms. Cohen, quote, "I got a new strap-on harness today. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life," you'd be out of work. Mr. Frisch, if you said to Dr. Braybrand, quote, "He stood in front of me, fully erect. Come on, taste it. It's what boys like us do when we like each other," you'd be sent back to LA in short order. Am I making you all uncomfortable? Am I creating a hostile school board meeting? Actually, I'm grooming you. I am desensitizing you to stop your normal reaction of revulsion to the obscene books I just exposed you to. There is no literary merit to it. Your communist political agenda seeks to normalize pedophilia, and your promotion of perversity causes gender dysphoria, making some kids want to mutilate their own bodies. Now you want to add misgendering their fellow students to the handbook as a punishable offense at school. You want to force all children to deny the biological reality of the few trans kids around them. Truly, liberalism is a mental disorder.
Your time has finished, Ms. Langton. Thank you. Your time has ended, Ms. Langton. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker...
Agenda item 3.02.
One more.
Oh, my apologies.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Lundquist-Aurora.
Good evening. "Plaintiffs, as parents of their minor children, enjoy no codified rights to make decisions regarding the health and education of their children." Does that sound familiar to you guys? Does it? Okay, so we have a lawsuit pending against you right now for the illegal suspensions of my sons and the illegal mask mandates after Executive Order 2. And your lawyers, which represent all of you, claim that parents in Fairfax County have no rights. Read the motion to dismiss. I hope you read it, because your lawyers are representing you, and it's out there. So as a parents' rights advocate, I have a problem with this. I was here today initially to speak against the proposed amendments to the Student Rights and Regulations Regarding Gender Identity, including the increased penalties for fourth graders who deadname. This is not because I'm against the gay and trans community, because I am absolutely not. I'm trying to push politics out of schools, and I think parents should be talking about the things that the school has taken over. This issue is not dichotomous. It's not a binary issue, if you will. This is about parents having the right to explain things to their children, not you guys. Anyhow, I think maybe my opinion bears no weight on your vote. Certainly, when I was trying to reach out to you when my sons were getting repeatedly suspended, you did not respond to me. So I would like to pose the question, why are you here? Why are you serving on the school board? I think only three of the 12 of you have children. What's your end goal in our children's education? Seriously, it's time for all of you to go, despite all those signatures for your negligence in denying our children in-person learning for so long. It's too bad that we have to wait until November 2023.
Agenda item 3.02, Superintendent Matters. I'll call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Pekarsky, members of the school board and community. Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of things I'd like to share. First of all, last night, I had the privilege of being at the FCPS retirement ceremony. It's our annual celebration of retirees. We honored over 150 members of our FCPS family and really appreciate those individuals. They've dedicated their life and their life's work to the betterment of the system and the education and care of our students. It's one of my favorite events, and I want to, tonight, honor them all one more time and thank all of our FCPS retirees for everything you have done, and I wish them all the best. I also need to take a personal shout-out and thank Dr. Ivey, our deputy superintendent, for recognizing me last night, as well as a retiree. And I'd like to thank members of the school board for joining the retirement ceremony last night and coming up and sharing in a wonderful photo, including our former board member, Mr. Moon. It was just a very nice evening for all of FCPS, and really reminds me of the family values that I think we all have in the Fairfax family. We honor our FCPS family each and every day, and all of our families in Fairfax County. It is National School Nurse Appreciation Day. I didn't know if you knew that, but I wanted to let you know, and we celebrate the contributions of our school nurses. They make a huge difference every day in our schools, and now more than ever, as we've gone through these last few years, appreciating our school health professionals and what they do for our students is huge. So on behalf of FCPS, I thank you all, school nurses, for your service, and all of the rest of our folks out there, please consider reaching out to your school nurse this week and just saying thank you for a job well done, or providing a note of appreciation. It really does matter, and appreciation matters for a job well done, so please do that. Let me see, if today is the 12th, tomorrow, May 13th, is School Communications Day. It is the first official School Communications Day. So I want to thank our amazing communications and community relations team. Our office does such a great job with community outreach. We've completely revamped that office under the leadership of Helen Lloyd and her amazing team, and we are working to continue to improve all of our communications and outreach with our students, staff, and communities, and to be sure that we're listening to all voices. We're really, really grateful to have that amazing OCCR team, and I thank them very much. I also want to just mention very quickly, once again, FCPS Magnet School, Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, has nabbed the top spot in the nation's rankings from U.S. News and World Report. I think I'm going to repeat that one more time, just in case folks didn't hear it. FCPS's Magnet School, Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, nabbed once again the top spot in the nation in the U.S. News and World Report 2022 Best Public High Schools ranking. I think that says a lot about what we continue to do to make Thomas Jefferson a world-class school, as we have for all of our schools here in FCPS, and we can continue to have excellence and equity in all of our schools, including at TJ. These rankings evaluate more than 17,000 schools on six factors, and we had our media reporting that in addition to TJ, there were seven more FCPS schools that were ranked in the top 10 in the Commonwealth: Langley, McLean, Marshall, Oakton, Woodson, Madison, and West Springfield. So we congratulate those two, even though we know with all of these rankings, there are their own limitations, but it is nice to see our schools being recognized through this publication. One thing I want to just closely wrap up, one, our students caring for our environment and resources. We continue to have amazing work around environmental sustainability in our schools. Lake Anne recently installed a new solar birdbash... excuse me, birdbath. They're probably having a birdbash in the path in their learning garden. Westlon Elementary has planted Japanese hollies and installed a lending library near their outdoor dining area. Cardinal Forest has started a composting program at their school, and Franklin Middle School has recently installed a pollinator garden on their campus where all plants are native pollinators. These are just a few examples of our amazing resource stewardship and our commitment to environmental education in our schools. And finally, I just want to say, we are excited. We're wrapping up our budget. We had a great work session with the board, and I know we'll be working over the next week and a half, and we'll have a work session actually in another two weeks before a final vote on the budget, but I'm very excited. We've really had great funding and support from the Board of Supervisors, and we are going to be able to advance really all of the initiatives, many, if not all, the initiatives that this board has talked about. And we'll also be wrapping up SRNR in two weeks. So tonight, maybe the agenda, a couple of things were postponed, but in two weeks, we'll be bringing some really important stuff back for you to really wrap up the school year. And on SRNR, I know you heard a little bit from the community tonight, Dr. Boyd and I are working, and Dr. Boyd in particular and her team are engaging our stakeholders, including SEPTA, including ACSD. And we've done a survey as well, and we're going to take that data, certainly share it with you, and help us finalize our SRNR approach in two weeks. I thank you all very much. I'm going to have to leave a little bit early tonight, but Dr. Ivey will take the seat and be glad to answer any additional questions that may come up this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Agenda item 3.03, Student Representative Matters. I call on Mr. Chadry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. In order to be eligible for the Level 4 screening process, students must get in through one of three pathways. This is just for the initial screening piece. Be at the top 10% of their local cohort on either the CAGAT or ENnet, or have a direct referral from their parent or guardian. There's one statistic that really stuck out to me. Approximately 70% of students who go through Level 4 screening come through parental referrals. This is something that came directly off the FCPS website. We already know that basing things off parental involvement is majorly inequitable. Many parents can't access resources or have a language barrier, and thousands don't know about the process. Kids shouldn't be denied educational opportunities or even the chance to be considered for programs simply because their parents can't be involved. That's a regressive policy, and it leads to access to opportunity falling along racial and socioeconomic lines. So then, why is it such a big factor for a program that fundamentally affects every aspect of a student's learning experience? Why is it that 70% of kids come into the program based on parental involvement, something which is only afforded to kids whose parents have the knowledge and the resources to advocate for them? According to our division's equity profile, English-language learners make up about 1.5% of our Level 4 programs, when they make up more than 20% of our student population. Additionally, students on free and reduced meals make up about 12.7% of Level 4, when they're 27% of our student population. And so I ask, why is it that, when I talked to my two predecessors in this office, they both said they didn't feel represented when they were going through the AAP program as young students? Why is it that one of our finalists for Student Rep this year was a young Latina student who was focused on ensuring that other students could be represented in AAP, because she, as a young scholar, didn't see that growing up? And why is it that one of my friends, a friend who I would like to note is going to Stanford next year, would always tell me that in middle school, she felt dumb because she wasn't in the Advanced Academics program? Well, I'm going to give you a few words from current and former students to maybe help decipher a little bit of that. We'll start with Didi Elsayad, who is a 2021 graduate of TJ. This was part of a piece she put in TJ's student newspaper. "I started third grade on the second floor of the school with a new group of people. We were the smart kids. The general education kids were outside in the trailers, filtered away, labeled as dumb and otherwise forgotten. We had constant support from our teachers. We had cool projects, and the parents always brought pie for pie day. Life as I knew it was pretty good as an AAP student. I later learned that the Gen Ed kids didn't have the same cool projects, and they didn't get pie day celebrations." Later, one day in third grade, my class was walking into the cafeteria, and a Gen Ed class was walking out. That was when I noticed most kids in the class walking out were Black or Hispanic, nearly zero white kids. When I looked at my line, I realized that it was me who was the odd one out. That was the first time I noticed race at my school. Now let's rewind. AAP kids are supposedly smart. Gen Eds are supposedly dumb. I knew it, my classmates knew it, even the teachers made their respective comments. Imagine if you were a Gen Ed student. Imagine being told from eight years old that you're stupid. Imagine watching this other group of students, the smarter ones, do all the fun projects and have all these activities. Suddenly, it's not just about pie anymore. Suddenly, AAP stops being this cool, harmless program. Suddenly, you can't really blame those kids, those majority Black and Hispanic kids, for not trying in school. What's the point if you're labeled as dumb? Next, I'm going to note Gerlin Carr, who is a 2021 graduate of TJ and last year's recipient of the school board's Character Award. "I once told a friend that I'm on free and reduced lunch, and she burst out laughing, asking why. We go to a school where less than 2% of the students receive free or reduced lunch. My dad was out of the picture for several years, and my mom worked long hours. My parents didn't know anything about the school system or how it worked. I was so jealous of all the kids who said their parents helped them with their homework. I hadn't even known that parents could do that. Of course, I didn't get into AAP. I was very confused about the whole thing, but I figured I wasn't all that smart. I was okay with that." She was the only student in her graduating class who went to TJ after not being in AAP throughout her career. "The day before the eighth-grade science SOL, I sat in on the AAP Science Teachers' Review Session. That was the best day of school I'd ever had. I learned so much, and it was so easy to pay attention and stay interested because of how much more I was being challenged. But it was a bittersweet day, because at the same time, I was shocked at how much more in-depth and effective AAP instruction was." Let me read that again. "I was shocked at how much more in-depth and effective AAP instruction was. I couldn't believe what I had missed out on. I was supposedly smart enough to attend TJ, so shouldn't I have been smart enough to receive AAP instruction?" Last is a student named Sharon Santos, who is a current senior at Chantilly High School. This was also an excerpt in The Purple Tide, which is Chantilly's news publication. "From third grade to eighth grade, students are separated and told that the classroom they are placed in determines their intelligence and potential. The message delivered to students receiving Gen Ed was very clear: You are not as smart as they are. As for AAP students, the expectation of high achievement that the program sets creates an environment in which success is the only option. As I look around my senior classes, I see striking similarities to that of my third-grade class. The legacy of the AAP program lives well past eighth grade. Despite students being allowed to choose more challenging courses in high school, a student who is part of the AAP program may be more likely to consider and enroll in more AP classes. The solution does not lie in funding the programs that separated students on the basis of metrics collected when the student is between seven and eight years old and guarantees them to an elite class until high school. The solution lies in assuring each child has what they need to achieve their academic potential." And so tonight, I pose to you all this question. Why is it that we label some kids as gifted and other kids as not gifted, when 70% of students who are considered to get that gifted label come in not through a test score, but through parental involvement, which is a really disparate measure that helps a select few kids, and that select few is, on average, more wealthier and far more privileged than our county as a whole? Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. I'll call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened other students and behaved in a manner that interfered with the operation of the school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Frisch. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those against? Abstaining? That motion passes with Dr. Anderson, Ms. Maron not here tonight. Agenda item five, Consent Agenda. Our adopted Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for Consent Agenda listing several items for approval of the Board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through Board Review, and documentation has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any Board Member prior to the meeting. The Consent Agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving these items? Seeing and hearing none, the Consent Agenda is approved. Agenda item six, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight, but action is scheduled for a future meeting. These new business items are on the screen. Agenda item seven, Board Committee Reports. I'll call on Mr. Frisch for a Public Engagement Committee update, and I will call on Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Tolan for a report from the Skippt Committee. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. The Public Engagement Committee met last week. We formalized suggested changes to the Governance Manual section on community participation to provide participants who need it with translation services and make sure they do not lose any of their time as a result of using those services. So you saw it was listed on new business, and that means that it will be coming to a board meeting near you very soon for approval. Additionally, we continued working on our proposed handbook and guidelines for School Board Advisory Committees. The end is in sight, and we will soon begin engaging committees, relevant staff, and our Board colleagues for their feedback in advance of a future work session to be scheduled at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do our Skippt reports. We had our final meeting for the school year of Skippt yesterday on May 11th. And last week, our executive team met as well. The full Successful Child and Youth Policy Team met. We have two School Board Members, myself and Ms. McLaughlin, and two Board of Supervisor Members, Rodney Lusk and Dahlia Palczek, on the committee this year. The idea behind Skippt is that all children need to be safe, nurtured, healthy, achieving, active, included, and respected. And in order for this to happen in Fairfax County, many Fairfax County organizations need to collaborate for this to be true. Policy and resource guidance for this is given by this organization. We have very senior members of SCPS that are active on this team. Dr. Ivy, Dr. Presidio, Dr. Boyd, Mr. Plattenberg, Dr. King, Mr. Tysons, Ms. Burke, and others. Thank you so much for your participation. Although work by this committee was slowed during the pandemic, the group is planning to move forward on many key issues. So Ms. McLaughlin and I really want to bring the Board up to speed on the five key areas that we're working on. We've got a lot that will be happening and a lot that we'll be bringing to you in the fall. As far as early childhood and school readiness, Anne Marie Tohe from Fairfax County and Maura Burke from SCPS gave us a report yesterday. They have been leading something called the Ready Region Capital Area for early childhood and school readiness, and it's a all sort of Virginia unified early childhood system. So we are in the forefront on that work. SCPS did early development, performed an early development instrument, diagnostic instrument on all of our kindergarteners. And so we have this data to show school readiness, and we'll use this data to inform strategic planning. We'll be mapping this data to see what our needs are and where we really need to focus resources. So we'll have that available data. They are revising and improving the implementation of their strategic plan and working with George Mason as a partner, engaging families, and using this as a framework for expanding family partnerships. We are looking for the feasibility of including early childhood programming in our CIP projects, both for the county and for FCPS, and looking at space that is currently available in county facilities that we could potentially use for early childhood facilities. We have an RFP out to expand part-time programming in libraries, apartment community rooms, et cetera. And as I mentioned, looking at these capital projects and seeing what is needed to implement additional sites. School Board Members, the FCPS We Play Groups have been very helpful to this program, and the Bridge to Kindergarten Program that is jointly funded and is now in every single one of our elementary schools has been really popular. So please, please advertise in your newsletters the fact that these are happening. We need people to sign up. SCPS is having in-house discussions. We have a meeting coming up in a week or so on how to expand access for three- to four-year-olds. And we are working on this plan, and our experts in early childhood will give us information, including budget numbers, on how we can potentially expand this work. On the behavioral health side, the Community Services Board and Healthy Minds Fairfax is coordinating with our own FCPS, Our Minds Matter, program. They are currently beginning the development of a new blueprint or strategic plan on this effort. And we'll have a survey. There's a survey out. A number of you already have it out in your newsletters, and I appreciate that. If you can get it out, we need to get input on what people need from our behavioral health resources, both from FCPS and from the county. We have some incredible cooperation going on. Fairfax County is providing short-term behavioral health services to 15 of our elementary schools through our grant program and is currently available to all middle school and high schools. They have deployed a clinician one day per week at Burke, Bryant, Montrose, Mountain View, and Quander Schools. They are working with our SCL, Universal Screener Data, and our Science of Suicide screenings to see where schools need the most help. Fairfax County is providing health clinicians in our three community schools. You'll hear more about that, too. It's no secret that we have substance abuse issues across the entire country, and Fairfax County is no exception. We do have an opioid task force between the county and the schools, and staff is developing a report for us that we will see early next week about exactly what that task force is doing and what the plans are. There was a plea along those lines by the school-related members of Skippt yesterday to focus on this work and see how we can provide as immediately as possible additional services. And as I said, we'll be working with staff to get an update by early next week. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Colleagues, I just have an update on the other three areas of focus for Skippt. And, you know, it is a lot of work, but a lot of times, because this is the joint work of the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, the system and the county, we did really want to make sure you guys understand where we are, and this was sort of a recap of where we stand for the year. So the other three buckets, the first one is My Brother's Keeper. This is a program that the Obama Foundation launched. It's a national program to help boys and young men of color. And Fairfax County is officially launching its chapter in the fall. This was an outcropping of Chairman McKay's Task Force on Equity and Inclusion that occurred during the 2020-21 year. After the full-scale launch, the goal is to look at refining existing services within Fairfax County to better engage these youth. In early 2023 winter timeframe, they will hold a local action summit. And from that summit, they will then develop a 180-day action plan and use that data to examine education and workforce, social-emotional learning, and behavioral health outcomes for boys and young men of color. The second bucket is about career readiness and workforce development. I will preface that our own Sloan Presidio is the champion of that particular area within Skippt and working with Supervisor Rodney Lusk. So he will be the expert if you want to know more about it. But essentially, one of the big announcements for that is that they have developed a new center called WISH, the Workforce Innovation Skills Hub. It just opened in the Lee District, and they will be working with Fairfax County Career and Technical Education staff to also look at how we can implement the Joint Environmental Task Force goals around green workforce development. But the goal is to assist youth 16 to 24 years of age in finding and training for in-demand careers. Then, in terms of community schools, I think we're all a little bit more familiar with that, but I did want to provide an update because you all did a great job, and we were presented with our community schools pilot program, of which you know we have three so far. But the goal is that we be very strategic as we increase this pilot to look at expanding throughout the county. So where we stand right now is that we have, under Sloan Presidio's shop, staff working with county, in particular, Jesse Ellis, that they developed an evaluation plan, looking at key metrics of our existing three pilots to evaluate what have been some of the outcomes to date, and then not just doing surveys with our stakeholders, staff in the building, families who have been in those programs, but also some focus group interviews as well. Collect all of that data, come back to the Board in the fall so that we can see the data of those three schools, what have been sort of the measurable outcomes, and then also talk about the structure and framework for site selection, management of these community schools. So there will be a lot to come in the fall, but I wanted to let you know that Dr. Presidio brought the draft evaluation plan to me and Ms. Tolan to look at. He also then shared it with both Ms. Darnak Kofax and Ms. Corbett Sanders before they were going to launch it out. But we're looking at it, but I would also recommend I'll circle back with Ms. Bukarski and Ms. Rochan Seismore Heizer. There is an urgency to this evaluation tool going out, but certainly, you know, I know the four of us looked at it and had some questions. We want to make sure that the metrics were robust enough. And I want to reassure Dr. Presidio that we do understand that he is waiting on us, but we'd only gotten it about a week earlier, and we needed some time on that. And then, I guess I covered everything, correct? I did. You're all done. We're all done.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Board Matters.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bukarski?
Go ahead.
Given the extensive update on Skippt, I think it would be helpful if we could ask some questions.
If you need to, go ahead. If there are no objections?
If there are no objections?
Go ahead.
So there are two areas of particular concern that I've been very active in and have worked very closely with my colleague, Ms. Darnak Kofax. And so I think we both have questions on two areas. One, a year ago, we met and discussed the importance of metrics on the community schools and how you clarify those metrics and actually having a longitudinal study associated with how success rates have occurred in the community school in, at Walt Whitman and at Mount Vernon Woods. And so we asked for, a year ago, those very clear metrics, which would show what happened prior to the community schools being implemented, and then the growth as a result of those being implemented. The information that was shared with us last Friday, which was supposed to be implemented this past Monday, did not have that. It only had a one-year look. Can we get a commitment that we will look at the pre-community schools and then the impact of the implementation of those community schools so that we can actually determine that rather than just looking at COVID and post-COVID?
So I really appreciate that question because several Board Members have had some email correspondence with me on that. What I've tried to clarify is that the plan is not meant to be a comprehensive longitudinal program evaluation yet of those three sites. What we're trying to do is collect some information, some baseline information that we can collect this spring to really inform the next board work session that we hope to schedule sometime, either in the summer or in the fall, as a follow-up work session to the conversation the Board had in February. And in that February board work session, one of the requests before moving forward with supporting the Skippt framework, or excuse me, the community schools framework, and taking that information back to the Board of Supervisors was to have some better data and some better understanding of the current level of services, the efficacy of those services, and the effectiveness of those services. And that's what we're trying to do with this initial evaluation. It's not meant to be a comprehensive longitudinal study. We don't have the time to be able to do that and be able to inform the Board of the current state on a timeframe that would put us in a work session in the summer or in the fall. So I'm working with the county to try to collect that information. If the Board wants a comprehensive longitudinal study, then that's going to take longer. It definitely will be something that we would have to schedule with the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, and I'm not sure how long that would be. So my understanding from the work session in February is that we wanted to come back in the summer and the fall, and there was a request to collect information. We're going to collect quite a bit of data. The survey instrument is quite comprehensive. We're going to do focus groups, interviews with all of the stakeholders involved. We'll be looking at quantitative data about, you know, student performance, SOLs, grades, attendance rates, behavior, disciplinary incidents, and the like. But it's not meant to be a longitudinal multi-year evaluation that would require really a lot more time and effort.
So I appreciate your response, Dr. Presidio, but as the person who made the motion in February about the importance of the baseline data, both Ms. Darnak Kofax and myself actually relied on the conversation we had a year ago and said we had a commitment to better understanding what the baseline was and then moving forward. And the baseline is not year three of the community schools, but rather, the baseline is what was the quantitative profile of the school pre-community school? And then, how did we move the dial as a result of the community school implementation? And you can't do that unless you actually look at the look back. And so I would urge that if it takes us a little bit longer, we should take the time necessary to actually have that looked at.
Well, I mean, I certainly would defer to the Board as a body on what the expectations are and what the timeline is. You know, there will be some comparison that we can look at from current state and previous state, but a comprehensive evaluation is going to take more time. Part of the challenge, of course, is COVID and the reliability and the validity of the data in those two years in the COVID period that we will have to really try to figure out how to control for in a comprehensive evaluation. The other issue is that the inputs are all different. We have three different models with three different management organizations with, you know, a variety of services that were provided. So it's going to be really hard to control for all of those variables, and we're going to have to get an evaluation team to help us with that. That's not something that I would feel comfortable drawing those types of conclusions in just a few weeks of time of analysis.
I would take the time to do it and get beyond because when we're talking about focus groups, sir, what happens with the focus group is that's a qualitative analysis, and we actually have the quantitative capability because of the data collected with discipline data, SOL data, and grades.
Well, just to clarify, so the Board as a body knows, this proposed evaluation would contain both qualitative data through those focus contain both qualitative data through those focus groups and interviews, as well as quantitative data through hard data like student achievement data, attendance data, discipline data, and student test data, and survey data. So it would be a mixed methods program evaluation.
No, I understand, but I will, I'll follow up again. I did send an email detailing just this, and it was a commitment that was made to Ms. Darnak Kofax and I a year ago. So I expect that when a commitment's made, that we honor it. And then the other aspect is the discussion of the opioid task force, which I was actually at the kickoff of the opioid task force, and it's something that we've worked on quite extensively. So I would like to have a deeper briefing on this because both Ms. Darnak Kofax and myself have been working very carefully with the leadership in Region Three, as well as our counterparts on the Board of Supervisors, and I've also been working with Brian Hill. And my concern is that I don't want to see us waiting until the fall to do better communications on the resources available because of, most recently, the data that's come out on the opioid deaths, 107,000 people last year, and the increase, and most of them tied to the increase of fentanyl. So if we could get a better brief on that. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Presidio, I'm really sensitive to what we know workload demands on central office, and I was wondering if this might be one of those situations where it's a matter of interpretation. So what had gone through my mind is as we go to gather the quantitative data on those different metrics you were naming off, like absenteeism, you know, testing scores, discipline, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Corbett Sanders, but what I would hope is if you're getting, we're already going to get one year, then for our IT department to just pull the, each of the years in those subject areas, I understand that this isn't about being scientific at a minimum, but it is a snapshot of just to, I think what Ms. Corbett Sanders is saying is, we don't, we're not asking for a deep, detailed report, but I think the data, once you pull one year, just, I mean, show the data in the charts and show that multi-year, and especially since we've come, because a lot of these pilots were occurring during COVID, and we know that there's been some major impact there, I almost think pre-COVID data could be very helpful.
So that's exactly what we're intending to do, but I think what I interpreted Ms. Corbett Sanders saying is that she wants more comprehensive analysis of, you know, what those outcomes and the effects of those outcomes were across the three different program models. And that type of analysis is going to take a lot more technical assistance than, you know, what I would be able to do just on my own. So if it's just providing the data with, you know, some high-level observational analysis, that's exactly what we were intending to do. But if it's really trying to look at the efficacy of the different program models, then that is going to take more time, and we're going to need to get somebody who can help us with that evaluation design.
Yeah, and I know Dr. Ivy was signaling she wanted to say something, but I just, I want to capture what you said, so we're all hopefully on the same page as much as possible. I do think that as many years as you can go back to, that before the pilots began, just on those data metrics you talked about, and certainly just a high level, what did we see here? That sounds really good to me. In terms of the analysis, like you noted, and we've talked about, that each of those three pilots are kind of operating differently, and which model are we seeing is working well? That is, I think, a deeper analysis component, and I will say that, for me, as one board member, I will give you as much runway as you all need, but what I've always hoped is that this is viewed as, these are our pilots, and we aren't going to go expand and add more of these programs if we don't even know from which of the pilots we are finding the most effective. So until we do that analysis of those three, that's where my caution is, that we would adopt and expand without determining in the end which pilot's the best way to go. Does that make sense?
It does. And again, the intent was to get that initial program evaluation set of data to the board in the summer, to be scheduled for review with the board in the summer or the fall, to inform the board's discussion about the framework for community schools, because the Board of Supervisors will not take any action on approval of the framework until this body takes action on approval of the framework. But certainly, we would not be looking at expanding until we had a more comprehensive program evaluation in place. So it's not to say the board, we would be asking the board to vote to expand any of the sites in the summer or the fall, just to adopt the framework itself and the components of the framework.
So we're sort of looking at part A right now, and then we'll be doing part B on the expansion component down the road when we've got a little more detailed analysis.
That's the proposal for the board. So the board just needs to give us, I think it sounds like, a little bit more direction.
I'd like to call on Dr. Ivy, and I just want to remind everyone, this isn't a work session. We are not prepared to discuss this. I did not come prepared to have these discussions.
Well, Ms. Bukarski, yeah.
Just want to make sure that questions get answered, but beyond that.
I agree. I think that, you might not have been looped into this, but those of us who were being asked, we're going to launch this, and we want to get your feedback, and so we're just trying to, A, make sure you all know this is going on, and B, to ask our questions of staff. And so it isn't, it isn't a work session. We're not expecting anybody to answer work session questions, but this, the board has in the past, when school board members give a committee update, other board members can ask questions.
And I agree. So let's keep it to questions. I just, staff is not prepared, and Dr. Braybrand's not here either. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying, Ms. McLaughlin. We're just, I'm not prepared. Dr. Ivy?
So I think we'll take this feedback tonight in this discussion, and Dr. Presidio and I will discuss it and talk with our staff and see what it is we can do, and work with Ms. Tolan and Ms. McLaughlin, and consult with Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. McLaughlin, and see how we can proceed. So thank you all.
And if the rest of us could also see this so that this doesn't continue to become a work session of the part. Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Dr. Ivy, I was going to say what you said. I think we need to take this offline. I need to be included in this as well because one of the pilots is in my area, and there's more pilots. So there are four board members who are involved in this, and we all need to get on the same page. And Dr. Presidio, I, you know, you and I have had several conversations about this, but I think we need real clarity between the Skipt members, those of us who have the pilots in our areas, and then we need to come to some kind of consensus as to where we want to go before we give it to the full board, and then before we give it to the Board of Supervisors, because it didn't happen that way the first time. You know that, to nobody's fault here in this room right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Board Matters, and we'll start with Ms. Tolan.
I can start on the, are you ready?
All right. Just wasn't quite, I still have my skip stuff up. Okay. Unfortunately, today, we had a near accident in front of one of our elementary schools in Drainsville, and, you know, we've had, we did have an accident at one of our middle schools a couple of weeks ago. So please, I would just like to make a plea to the public, don't drop your children outside of the normal kiss and ride procedures for your school. Please have your children bike or walk to school safely or take the bus. And also, can all drivers please be aware of stop-school buses and speed limits around our schools, especially at arrival and dismissal? We have several traffic issues around the county. Working with FCPS Safety and Security and the Drainsville Supervisor's Office to look for solutions, please do your part, slow down, and drive safely. I was very excited this morning. Government classes at Herndon High School, in conjunction with Cornerstones, hosted a Herndon Futures Forum. I was joined by Delegate Irene Shin, Senator Jennifer Boyzko, Mayor Sheila Olem, and Supervisor John Faust to participate in conversations around student mental health, school capacity, the role of state and local government, development and small business in Herndon, climate change, economic security, career opportunities, and more. I surely hope this becomes an annual event. The students did an absolutely incredible job of organizing this and participating. Well done, Hornets. I was able to speak, to speak with a McLean High School Highlander reporter about our hiring procedures and search process, to bring in Dr. Reed, and had a great conversation around that. You've heard about our Skipt meetings and the Herndon School Readiness Program met last week as well. I last night attended the Herndon High School Honors Reception. I'm so proud of all of our students and the incredible places that they are going, and I'll look forward to hearing the same from McLean and Langley. Tomorrow, I am touring the Cooper Middle School renovation with Supervisor Faust, and I'm super excited to see they just opened a whole new section of Cooper as part of the renovation process. Great Falls, Culver Run, and Forestville families, I'll see you at the golf tournament next Monday, and I'll see Churchill Road Elementary School parents and families at the family celebration tomorrow evening. And we are selecting the new principal at Herndon Middle School and have our first meeting for that on next Monday at 5:16, so please join us for that. We are preparing for renovations at Herndon Elementary School and Drainsville Elementary School, so those of you in the community that would like to participate, please let me know. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Yes, thank you. I just want to touch on a few things. One, I had a meeting with a family about one of my high schools and how they do the National Honor Society application process, and I know that seems kind of a silly thing to bring up to all of you in tonight's meeting, but it raised a red flag for me on maybe what is our standard consistency in how it's being done school to school, because in general, the National Honor Society is really a wonderful thing, and they have a national constitution. There are best practices in how it gets done, and I'll be bringing it, you know, to this school and the region attention, just because what was outlined for me by the family really, unfortunately, you know, created some trauma, and I think we need to just really be mindful, again, of something that we want to be encouraging of our students to do, and it is such a wonderful way to channel our leaders, but it was, it's enough for me to bring it up to you tonight that I was surprised in what I learned. The second thing I wanted to just share with you is, I mentioned this to Skipt at the end of our meeting, and I sent something out in a newsletter, but I would really appreciate from my fellow colleagues, when I send this to you, it's a survey about health research in underserved communities, and it's being done through I Thrive, which is the Integrated Translational Health Research Institute of Virginia. It's a partnership with UVA, Virginia Tech, the Carillion Clinic, and Inova Health Systems. And so it has a deadline that ends, I believe, June 14th. So again, I'll send you more information, but I can't emphasize enough, especially the out-larges and some of my colleagues who represent our undersourced, under-resourced communities, that this is just such a crucial way to bring their voices and their needs to the table. And then I just wanted to put a spotlight on the budget for all of you. I know we're two weeks away from voting on it, and I know at our work session, you all heard me expressing concern that we've got some really crucial, mission-critical needs of our system, and I spent over two hours today talking with Jeff Plattenberg and Design and Construction and Facilities in one of my high schools about our athletic fields and how in desperate need they are of maintenance. And as you all know, our facilities department, for annual repairs and infrastructure improvements, there's just simply not enough money in the budget, and so I'll be bringing you, again, some of my ideas, but I want to make sure that if there's anything we can do in our budget to make sure our resources are going in the right way, I'd like you all to consider it. Thanks.
Thank you. I was happy to attend with many of you, my colleagues, a question-and-answer series with our incoming superintendent, Dr. Reed, last week. And if you missed this opportunity, you will have another next Tuesday, May 17th, with a virtual town hall from 7:00 to 8:00, and you can register for that online. Last night, it was wonderful to honor our 2022 retirees. I think they said within that room, there was over 3,500 collective years of service to FCPS, and this is a dedicated service. So thank you all for what you have shared with us, your talents, your skills. We appreciate you, and we wish you well on your next chapter. And there will be a Spring Bands Concert coming up on May 19th at Edison High School, and Mount Vernon is having one, and I don't want, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I don't want to take too much away from you, but I know you're probably as excited as I am that the band director, the orchestra teacher, excuse me, not the band, the orchestra teacher at Mount Vernon High School, Mr. Alberto Rodriguez, reached out to an up-and-coming composer, and she composed a five-minute original score for the Mount Vernon Orchestra, and they will be presenting that. It will be the premiere, the name of it is Free Fall, and that will be premiered on Wednesday, May 25th at 7:00 p.m. So hope to see you at one of these upcoming events.
Ms. Cohen, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Thanks very much. These last couple of weeks, I had the opportunity to go see our Davis Center, Career Center kids in action at the Burlington and the Tyson's Hyatt, and I learned a lot of things about putting donuts on the hangers at Burlington and sorting them, and then how to actually roll hospital, I mean, hotel-grade utensils in a, why are you looking at me like that? It's a good skill to have in a napkin. So that was great. Thank you for your patience while I redid it three times. And then I got to go and hang out with our students at the Pully Center at the Courtyard Marriott in Alexandria, and get to help load industrial washer and dryers, and watch some amazing sorting of 500, like, different kinds of sugar and sugar substitutes done very efficiently, and so I'm hoping they'll come to my house later this week. I also got to go to Lake Braddock and speak to their teachers for tomorrow class. A big shout-out to Ms. Castro's class, who asked so many amazing questions and really kept me on my toes, and I'm just so excited. We got to award several contracts for FCPS, so can't wait to see these students back teaching for us, and several letters of intent to folks in the class there, so thank you, thank you for having me. Yesterday, we got to be a part of the mural reveal at West Springfield Elementary School. Incredibly cool to see kids who kept saying, when they saw the different folks in the mural, that one looks like me, and it was awesome. And they all got to put their handprints on different pillars. The last thing I just wanted to say is, along with a few of my colleagues getting to go to the retirement ceremony last night, was amazing, and I got to give a huge hug to one of my favorite people in the world, Ms. Leslie Laut Torres, from Cherry Run Elementary School PAC program, one of the first places I got to substitute teach. And when you talk about people who go above and beyond what they do, she used to come to my best friend's house with a child who was not supposed to be potty-trained, couldn't eat solid foods, and they thought he never would, and came every day for dinnertime unpaid to help for six months until he would eat solid food. And he now houses a refrigerator and is about six feet tall, and that is all thanks to Ms. Leslie. So I know there are a million Ms. Lesleys in our school system, and we hate to see you go, and we hope you'll come back and substitute, and we hope you know how much you've meant to all of us. Thank you.
All right. So since our last board meeting, I have visited with the Greenway Down So since our last board meeting, I have visited with the Greenway Downs Citizens Association to talk about the Falls Church High School renovation. It was exciting because my staff aide grew up in that area and so we got to talk about their community and the great changes in store for Falls Church High School, including the very large parking improvement on the campus. I've had office hours with various parents and students. This past weekend, speaking of murals, I was able to attend the Providence District mural unveiling with Supervisor Delia Palchik and her new daughter, who is adorable, at Celebrate Fairfax and Tysons. And last week, I visited Kilmer Middle School and had great conversations with Principal Miller about next year's middle school recess as well as the proposed cellphone policies and their plans for summer school and learning loss and more and I'm looking forward to visiting more schools this month, trying to squeeze in a few more before graduations begin, which are just around the corner. So next week and the week after, I will be at Frost Middle School, Marshall Road Elementary School, Oakton High School and Mosaic Elementary School and then on to like six graduations. So very much looking forward to celebrating with everybody.
Ms. Kizgamar followed by Ms. Somesh.
Okay. Well, I had the pleasure of being with our chair at Liberty Middle School Arbor Day with the Board of Supervisor folks and they have the most amazing fresh eggs for a very, very low price and the cutest chickens. And so I thought, oh my gosh, they're warm and delicious. So at any rate, I also had the opportunity to watch Crazy For You at South Lakes High School where I saw amazing performances by our students. I also had the opportunity to attend the FCPS Hall of Fame event where I was literally floored by one of our former students who is in a wheelchair but doesn't seem to know it and has been writing children's books. She's been on the Today Show and she is an amazing speaker who brought all of us to tears. So we have a lot to be proud of and I hope to chat with her soon. And then finally, the last thing I'll mention, even though there's other stuff, but I had an opportunity to celebrate with the Lee District where they were celebrating the opening of their community center, which is quite amazing and they have a workforce project there especially for some of our students to help them develop as well as enjoy and play and it's a beautiful facility. So that was a wonderful celebration and I too look forward to visits to schools and looking forward to how many graduations as an at-large member we can possibly fit into our schedule. So have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, I think I won the competition last year, but I'll, you know, white flag for this year. Too many things going on. But no, I had the pleasure last week of joining the Hispanic Leadership Alliance, who has raised $26,000 that they were able to offer to students as scholarships for their, to fulfill their dreams and goals in college next year. Also was obviously a joy to join the retirement ceremony yesterday and was more than a formality. Really, it was incredibly touching to see people who've devoted major chunks of their lives. I mean, you know, obviously it starts with the lower end, but 20, 30, 40 years of service to our system really speaks to what Dr. Brabran said earlier about family and that this is really something that's beyond just a job and our staff are more than just employees, but really we're a community that cultivates the next generation. So that was really a privilege. And then another really moving opportunity I had was a student of ours who was a senior the year we came into office invited me to her wedding. It was one of my mentees. It was, yeah, it was really, really inspiring actually to see her, you know, have a momentous occasion of her life and to think about, you know, the importance of the work we're doing to really set them up for success in their futures. And then finally, I did want to just put in a plug. I am really concerned as we're having the SRNR conversation and I know we're postponing it to be thoughtful and whatnot, one of the modifications that is coming is really our hands are tied about because TSRC Fairfax is being shut down and I, you know, I don't think we've spoken enough about this. I don't think we've advocated enough to the county and Jeff McKay and team, I want you to hear us loud and clear, we need a solution to this. It's provided a critical alternative to kids who otherwise would not be afforded an educational opportunity in a secure environment and as colleagues, we've already seen the impact of not having that option in some of our conversations. So I'm pleading that we really be creative about how we might find an alternative to that and I'm disappointed that we're going to have to make that change in the SRNR this year. But anyway, have a good night, everybody.
Ms. Corbett Sanders followed by Ms. Seismohizer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It has been a busy couple of weeks for everybody and some really exciting things and I'll start with last night's event celebrating the 150 retirees and it was truly a family event. It was family by choice in that you had people who had worked together in the same buildings for decades, but also you had husbands and wives who had joined the school system single and got married and you had sisters who had spent their whole career together in the school system and that really just speaks volumes about the caring culture and a great place to work. So it was a nice, joyous evening celebrating people going on to the next step in their lives and inviting them to come back as substitutes, so we hope they will. I also had the opportunity to brief the Good Shepherd Housing Leadership Team on the work that we are doing in workforce development, career and technical education and adult community education and how that work actually provides a nice compliment and a handoff to the work of the Wish Center, which was opened last Saturday. And so it really was a great opportunity to have that sharing between the two and show how it hands off. And then I had the opportunity to work with the Fort Belvoir Career Transitions Job Fair and really encourage, FCPS actually had a table at this job fair for the first time and we were there recruiting to see, to have our national heroes join the FCPS heroes of the future. And I encourage all of our service members as they retire to consider FCPS as their second career. On June 4th, FCPS will be partnering with the NAACP to have a virtual job fair for our students on the trades and working with all of the trade unions in the DC metro area to create opportunities for our students to look at the trades as a potential post-high school opportunity, including having some internships this summer. The South County Federation invited me this week to talk about the challenges that our students face with social media and really encouraging parents that they have an active role to play and to take more interest in the social media activities of their children, know what they're doing online and put in the protections as necessary and also to be aware of signs where a child may be cyberbullied and provided them some tools that FCPS has created to really support families and be partners with families in this area. And then of course, looking forward to Mount Vernon's activities next week. Thank you.
I will try not to have that bell ring. I, you know, I was very excited to finish my last student listening tour. I've been doing a student listening tour at a high school in each region and last week was Region 5 and I appreciate being at Mount Vernon with my colleague Karen Corbett Sanders to hear from two different groups of students on issues and concerns and thoughts they have. And I will say to share, Dr. Ivy, since Dr. Brabran's not here, the number one thing that I heard in all of my listening sessions across the county was about advisory. So I will just let you know that. But really, the students were really bright, very articulate and had some really, really great suggestions for continual improvement and it was wonderful to hear them. Lots of principal meetings, there's lots of openings in Region 4, so I'm excited to see what great candidates our region superintendent will bring back. I am a little jealous of Ms. Cohen with her Pullian Davis Center visits since I did those earlier this year, so I know all about the donuts. But I had a actually really great worksite visit with our STEP programs at South Lakes High School this week and also went to the Courtyard by Marriott and watched our students. And the best thing I heard about our STEP program actually was two. One was the number of paid employments our interns have gotten and so they're leaving the programs because of their paid employments. And the second was how creative South Lakes in particular has been in creating situations where our STEP students can also access classes to get their standard diploma or take other classes. And so it was a great model for I think what can be done with our transition programs. Dr. Presidio? Not that I'm hinting. And I also had a great visit with Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. Thank you Principal O'Neil and Principal Blunt at Greenbrier West. It was wonderful to sit out in the sun and talk about all the great things the school is doing and hear some of the challenges. If you want to sub, that's a challenge I heard everywhere across the county. We're looking for some great subs. But what I will say is at all the school visits, especially at Mount Vernon Woods, I will say the learning and the joy and the happiness was just palpable and it just makes your heart sore when you see those kids together and how much they're learning and how happy they are doing it. Next week, I'm going to Frost with my colleague, Mr. Frisch, to see the renovation and South Lakes to tour the rest of the school as well as the Avid program at Lewis and I'm looking forward to celebrating all of our students across the county at graduations. I loved all the musicals that were the last two weeks and I cannot wait for the Cappies.
Thank you. The Arbor Day event at Liberty really was quite fun, especially feeding those dry dead worms to the chickens. I felt like the kids were like really egging us on to do this, so it was, it was fun. They had a really good time teaching us. I have had great visits to Poplar Tree and Union Mill this past week as well and today I had the opportunity to go to Franklin Middle School to celebrate the award-winning Vegahita Rapadilla with our family and Consumer Services students. They won the Community Choice Award in the Real Food for Kids Culinary Challenge. They are amazing. It was, it was really, we were, we were all blown away by their creativity and the exciting part is that it's going to be available for all FCPS students on our school menus next year. So how's that for hands-on, you know, activities that have very far-reaching impact? They were, they were very excited about it and I enjoyed that. I also want to give a shout out to Daniel Lee, who won first place at the National Fencing Tournament from Chantilly High School and a very hearty congratulations to the 30 National Merit Scholarship winners, quite a few of which are from the Sully District. I have some more upcoming school visits and of course, all of the graduations. It's going to be really fun and exciting this year to be able to celebrate with everyone. Thank you all for, for the meeting tonight and with that, we'll adjourn.